Board meeting room. I'll just turn it over to Dr. Adley real quick on masks in our meetings.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending, and particularly those people who are in person this evening. Thank you. This is not a school, obviously, and the mask requirements for different buildings and different municipal buildings are somewhat different within this building. There is not a mask requirement. However, having said that, we certainly do want to keep our distancing practices. And also, anyone in this building certainly is free to wear a mask, whether they are vaccinated or whether they are not. Well, if you're not, you have to. So that's the one requirement that we would ask people to adhere to. Certainly, if you are not vaccinated, you should be wearing a mask. And if you feel as if you should want, you want to wear a mask even though you are vaccinated, that is okay too. We'll certainly evaluate that as we go forward, but that's currently the practice that we have at present until and if it changes.
Thank you, Dr. Adley. I'll try and make my comments brief. Good evening. Thank you all for joining us this evening in person and Zoom. It's hard to believe we're in the last week of summer break and school will begin next Monday in person. So I think that's the exciting theme. I want to continue to thank all those parents and community members that continue to send emails and thoughts to the board, providing their thoughts and ideas. Today, I had the opportunity with Dr. Adley and co-chair Kip Coons, First Selectman Jamie Stevenson joined us, Dr. Luke Forshaw, and several other members of the building committee, and we did kind of an in-depth tour of the Ox Ridge site, wanting to make sure it was prepared for school. It's amazing the transformation from two weeks ago, when I almost lost my car in a dirt hole over there, to a fully paved parking lot, bus loop, entrance for students, ramp, handicap accessible, all that good stuff. Mike Lynch has been over there doing a lot of hard work. His team has been cleaning up, and he's got landscapers over there. So it's really incredible, the transformation that can happen over two weeks and getting Blacktop down up there. So we actually did a test run, had buses up there to do a test run of the bus loop. I would ask all those families from Ox Ridge for your continued patience as we build a new school, which I think is the exciting part of it. As many of your students that you can get on buses, we appreciate. We'll work with the local police also the first day, the first week of school on traffic control. But you know, we're going to need your patience. It's going to be a new drop off and pickup up there. But I think the end result is what we're all looking forward to. But things look to be in really good shape up there. The overall school is progressing along. You can see the formation of the courtyard, the classrooms, you know, the main educational building. So that's really exciting. I worked, I spoke to the folks on site, Dave Prevenzola and George, and we'll set up shortly. We'll figure out best time and date to get a board tour up there so everyone can see the incredible progress that's going on up there. I also had the opportunity Monday morning to welcome and kick off the new teacher and staff orientation at Token Eek School. Dr. Adley and the admin team organized a great day to welcome close to 50 hires. Marge and the team keep saying how busy they were. Well, it was evident by the incredible new faces and smiles that were at Token Eek on Monday. The principals introduced their new team members, and the new principals and assistant principals introduced themselves and their new team members. The energy in that room was real. It was not just a new energy that I think we feel from starting a new school year. It was an energy that we have worked together to hire these great new teachers and staff members. And as much as we choose them through a challenging interview process in talking to them, they also chose us. And there was a recurring theme about how excited these folks were to join the Darien District in terms of being educators or just being part of our overall staff. The recurring theme coming from those that I spoke to is that they wanted to come to the Darien District. They saw a district that not only survived through the pandemic, but thrived through the pandemic over the last year in moving the district forward. Some of the comments were "a district in a community that was focused and invested in education." One person said, "No matter what was thrown your way, you all seem to live up and do what was right for the students and for the community." So I think that's pretty exciting. I think our continued focus should be, as we start a new year, we're back in school, in person, moving forward, working together, and caring for each other. We'll do this by listening and working together as a district, as a board, as an administration, and as a community in a professional and respectful way. There are probably more changes ahead of us over the course of September, but we're starting school in person next week. Dr. Adley will continue to update us on the most current information. So thank you again for the feedback. Thank you for working together as a community, and we'll keep our kids and our staff safe and healthy in our schools. Thank you. I have a, I would like to make a motion to amend Agenda Item 7B to add possible action on use of budget control after update on district enrollment for the 2021-2022 school year. May I have a motion? Mr. Seeny, second. By Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Mrs. Akman had a prior commitment. She texted me. She's not able to attend tonight. So we'll move forward with that amendment. So we'll move over to public comment, Michelle. And let's start with our friends that are here in person.
Absolutely.
So Alicia, we have designated that as the public comment chair.
Right away.
And we're very happy to see you. If you want to speak, I'm sure you'll have questions later on. But we'll free that up for the time being for any public comment. Anyone in the audience for a public comment? What's that? Oh, okay. You can go back, Alicia. Thank you. No, thank you. Michelle, we'll move to public comment with our friends in Zoom land.
Good evening. If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. You will notice a blue hand icon appear in the upper corner of your screen where your face and/or name or number appears. When it is your turn to speak, the facilitator will identify you and announce that you're unmuted for public comment. Once recognized and unmuted, please state your name and address. You will have three minutes to comment. Mr. John Dunn, you are unmuted and recognized.
Good evening. My name is John Dunn, and I live at 175 Raymond Street. I would like to begin by commending Superintendent Adley and the board for the recent appeal to the state to allow for more local autonomy in making key health decisions that have such a huge impact on our children, especially our youngest learners. As a father to a Token Eek first grader, I too have reached out to the governor's office as well as my state rep to request the end of mandatory mask mandates in our schools. It is time to make masks optional and let parents make the best decisions for their children. I would ask all of those listening tonight to remember some of the main reasons why the mask mandates were instituted during the darkest days of the pandemic. A vaccine was far out on the horizon, and we didn't know how susceptible our children were to COVID. But times have changed. As of last week's Jamie Stevenson's message, nearly 90% of eligible people in Darien have been vaccinated. CT ranks third in the country for highest vaccination rates. Any teacher, administrator, or school employee has had access to the vaccine for half a year now. And most importantly, we know that COVID isn't a serious threat to our children. As published in the New York Times on July 26th and updated on August 16th, quote, "Among children under 12 who remain ineligible for the vaccine, serious forms of COVID are also extremely rare. Children face bigger risks when they ride in a car," end quote. Think about that for a moment. The risk associated with driving my daughter to school in a car is greater than COVID. Making masks optional lets parents make the best decisions for their own children and family. During the last June Board of Ed meeting, multiple parents voiced their support of masks, saying that wearing them prevented their children from getting strep throat during the academic year. While entirely unrelated to the spread of COVID, that is their choice, and we must respect that. However, my choice is for my daughter to breathe freely, not have her voice muffled, and for classmates and teachers to see her smile with all her missing teeth. So many of my fellow parents breathed a huge sigh of relief last fall when full in-person learning resumed and we came one step closer to returning to normal. Our next sigh of relief should be when masks become optional for our children, and it will be one that is unobstructed and full of fresh air. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Dunn, thank you very much.
There are no more raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Moving right along, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening again. Trying not to be too redundant from the board chair's comments, I'll just probably add to them if I may. The new teacher orientation, I want to thank the members of the DEA also. They were very instrumental in the onboarding and support of our new students, providing lunch today, and also they had a social where they were doing mini golf with them last week. They had a wee article printed about that, so that was nice to see. We now are about, as of today, probably 51 new staff members. We had two teachers give us notice actually today, so we will be looking to replace those. At this particular time in the year, there's a basic process of reciprocity between superintendents that until we replace someone, the employee would stay on in the respective positions. So we'll work on that and we'll see how that goes. We have one position available, one-year position for special education still open over at Token Eek, and that sort of completes the staffing with Marge and crew have done a fabulous job getting us a tremendous, tremendous talent actually, if you've arrived in district. The August administrative retreat went well. We focused on strategic planning, the diversity, equity, and inclusion, and also social and emotional learning for our students and for our staff, because as you know, we're training all of our staff this year. Opening convocation is tomorrow. That's the kickoff. I'm sure that the staff are ready and eager to hear the address and welcome back. That's at 10 o'clock. Remember, board members are invited. If you happen to be in town and want to swing by, it'll be 45 minutes, and we'll get you in and get you out of there. At the Board of Selectment meeting on August 15th, the Board of Selectmen voted to establish one building committee for the renovations of Henley Homes and the Royal Schools. So we'll move forward to the next steps. Bus routes for our parents who are there. If you go on the website right now, you can find the bus routes. They've just been posted, and they will be in the Darien Times tomorrow. Just a wee addition to the Ox Ridge update that the chair gave, it's just a wee reminder to our staff, or to our parents. There are very little changes around within the building. The construction company, after long processes, were able to minimize any movement. Probably the biggest movement is the playground that was just moved to the back of the building for the most part. So we're appreciative that they hit the deadline and that our new staff and staff were able to, return of staff were able to get in this week. And listen, there's just an excitement and buzz around town and within the profession here and our staff to receive our students next week. I mean, some of our kids have not been in school for a long time, and it's nice that we're all coming back together in person as one community again. So we look eagerly anticipate their return on Monday.
The only other thing I will add that I made a note, Dr. Adley, is it was a very exciting Monday to see our two teachers in residence folks have joined us, and they were there Monday at Token Eek. So that's exciting that we're moving forward with that program. We will move forward with the approval of minutes. It is requested that the board approve the following minutes of the regular meeting held on July 27th, 2021, and the minutes of the special meeting held on August 10th, 2021. May I have a motion, Mr.? What's that? Oh, okay. Okay. Yep. Mr. Maroni, second. Mrs. Parent, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Mine is... Yep. Moving along, board committee reports. I think we updated on Ox Ridge. Anything else? Presentations and discussions. We will move to Dr. Adley and updates on opening of schools.
Thank you. Thank you to Alicia. It's good to see her, Alicia. Thank you for joining us. So essentially, the metrics, the picture of the metrics is the last two months they've been creeping up. I mean, that's really where we are. On a call today with the State Department of Education and Public Health Department, they had a sense that it may be tapering off. That's the sort of interpretation. And we're basically in a sort of wait-and-see scenario. On through August 14th, the CDC said that we were a high rate of transmission for Fairfield County. And here you can see the rates in Darien through August 14th. So we're 10.2 per 100,000. And these just give you some of the updates. These were monthly. The Health Department have now changed to weekly. We get weekly updates, but this was when they were doing the monthly updates. So you can see the sort of uptick in cases. And then this is the weekly update. So from August 13th to the 19th, there were 13 cases. So clearly, there's a wee bit of an increase, and we'll see how that plays out. Teacher vaccinations. So you're aware of the announcement that was made about teacher vaccinations. I will say that there is confusion. So the State Department of Education and Public Health put out that all certified staff or all staff hired by the Board of Education that were not volunteers or contractors who have direct contact with students would need to be vaccinated by a certain date. Or they rolled it out as it wouldn't be employed. What has been interpreted as, well, you can do some testing instead. So there is major confusion around what the governor said, what the order actually said, and there needs to be clarification because there's just confusion around, if someone's not vaccinated, can they just go for the weekly testing? That's one interpretation. And the other interpretation is, no, that's not the case. And you would have to at least have your first shot or your first shot at an appointment by a certain date, or otherwise you wouldn't be employed. So that's under legal counsel at the moment for clarification. So I don't know. I can tell you much more than that, but that's kind of where we are at the moment. And we're trying to, we're waiting to hear more information on that case.
Can I ask a question on that? Are you allowed to tell us what percentage of our staff are not vaccinated right now?
I think it was, we were a high vaccination rate of about 75, 78% that we know of.
Last year, and how many we knew we vaccinated at our clinic. And then I know that there are many others who have gone outside of that clinic, but I just, I don't have a hard number on that. But if it goes through that we have to test those that aren't, they're choosing not to get vaccinated on a weekly basis, we'll have a hard number for you because we'll have to know.
Right.
So that remains an open item, and eagerly await feedback.
I know there's a question about whether the nine of us fall under that as well. Do we have clarification on that?
So there is no clarification on that, whether there was discussion, there was discussion about this might apply to Boards of Education. My own personal opinion on that, you're volunteers. To me, you're volunteers, so I would think it'd be hard to do that. But that's, I couldn't rule that out, that you would have to be vaccinated. So it's still undetermined at this particular point, but for me, you're volunteers, but we'll see.
So more to come from Hartford.
The testing clinics, I'll let Alicia talk to that, but we are in line and we're waiting, and Alicia, you can take.
We're just waiting to hear when they're going to match us with a partner who's going to do the testing. And once we have that information, they should come weekly. The only thing that we have to do as a school district is collect the consent forms for people who are interested, and it is for children who are in K through sixth grade. And then my understanding was unvaccinated staff members across the whole district. But then they mentioned something today that made me a little confused, so I'm still waiting on further information. But that's the idea. I'm assuming that because they came out with, if you're not vaccinated as a staff member, that you have to have weekly testing, that that's part of that testing program that they're expecting us to take advantage of. So once we have all the information, we'll send that out for people to go ahead and do the consent forms for families that are interested in having their kids tested weekly. It's not mandatory. It's free. We're not collecting insurance information. We're not even, you know, it's totally free of charge. And my understanding is it should be very convenient for the families that are interested. But I don't, you know, I won't know more. I won't know enough until they contact us.
So do you have any information as to, will it be set up at each elementary school? Will it be centralized? When will the results? What type of test are we using? Has any of that been brought to you yet?
It's a molecular test, so it's a PCR. It is pooled testing. So each sample will then be put into a, you know, 10 samples will be put together. If then in that pooled sample, there's a positive test. And what my understanding is, they don't have to be re-swapped. They'll be able to figure out which person it was that's positive in that pooled testing. And it should be within 24 hours that we get results. So that's my understanding of where it is. But I know that testing now has taken, we've gone from what was 24 hours now, some people are taking a couple, two days. It's a lot better than it was last fall, though. So that's kind of why it makes sense to offer it now than it did last year because it was taking five and six days to get results back. But now you're able to get them much faster. And it's a smaller population that we're really kind of focusing on for that state grant.
Thank you.
If I may give the board just one update, maybe the public just one update for open houses. We have looked at these, and we've looked at all the events from commitment meetings to other meetings that are of a bigger nature type thing. For the open houses, what we are going to do is we will do it virtually, remote, we'll do it remote, but interactively, right? So the staff will be in their classrooms, and we will do the open houses for each of the classes. It will be live, so it's not going to be recorded. It'll be live, and it'll be an opportunity for engagement with the teacher. So I think that's a reasonable compromise, putting two parents in each classroom. Like, this doesn't make sense in terms of the spacing. So those are just some reasonable modifications that I think are reasonable to make. And based on last year, they were fairly well received. In fact, that's a wee bit, that's probably a wee bit, a step even further beyond what we did last year because we generally recorded them, and they're going to be live this year. So I'll give, we didn't want to restrict one parent versus two parent and get into all of that discussion and have so many people in classrooms roaming around the building. So that's what will be shared by building administrators with their communities. If anybody has any question about that. And just latest on mitigation strategies, I guess I'll just say one from CIC, which was the possibility of if someone is infected and they're a contact, they would have to wear a mask outside technically until they have their, I think it's a three to five day testing window. So that we sort of have to look at that and say, there's not much sense in some of this to some degree. I'm not saying that doesn't make sense, but it's harder to, it's harder to track those students in many ways. And I think it's fair to say it is hard to track. Now it's hard to track, and it'll continue to be hard to track. So that's the direction they gave us this morning through CIC and also through the State Department. Those are the major changes. If any board members have, the plan has been updated. We've communicated that accordingly to our community. And we'll continue to update the plan where we can. Appreciate everybody's feedback. I know there was a question between three feet, six feet, and those nuances of the plan. And we can, we continue to review things that makes, that makes sense to us and try to respond accordingly to the data, to what's coming from the respective departments.
Dr. Adley and Alicia, while you're here, anything changing? Or if the board wants any conversation on what tracking is going to look like and what reports we're going to see from a board standpoint? Whether it's just number of cases, because it makes sense to look at that more by school with the high school being vaccinated and elementary schools not, and then tracking and quarantining. And then at the end of the day, is there anything that you need to accomplish what you have to do?
So I'm trying to remember all your questions. The first one.
What does tracking look like and what do you need?
Tracking will look like it did last year, but for our, you know, for our reporting purposes, for our dashboard, I think we will probably separate it out by school. And we'll probably add, like, if they're vaccinated or not, because that's a part of the state report that has to be done on a daily. You know, anytime we have a new case, we report to the State Health Department that we have a case. And then now they've added that piece of whether or not they were vaccinated. So that might be an interesting piece of information, though. I don't want to promise you that because I think that that could reveal people's, you know, medical information potentially. Because when you start narrowing it down to the schools, and they do like high school, middle school, and then elementary school, and not say which school it's at, so it provides as much privacy as possible.
Sure.
You know, and then maybe total cases and, you know, vaccinated, unvaccinated, but maybe not by school, just so that people have an idea. And then, so for quarantining purposes in the classroom, you know, last year we did at the elementary level, we were really quarantining by class because it was really hard to tell. With the three-foot distance and masking, it really allows for kind of more targeted quarantining. So hopefully, we'll see less quarantining and on all levels. And the elementary school, we won't send an entire class out unless, unless we have several cases in a class, in which case it seems like it's transmitting more there. It would make sense to shut the classroom down for that amount of time. We're going to stick with the test-out option for your quarantine. So it'll be seven-day quarantine with the test on day five or later. So that means you can come back on day eight after exposure, just to make that clear. Of course, the sports don't match that. So they're, get tested on day five and come back after eight days of quarantine. And it's, so we'll manage that. The trainers also help manage that piece. What was the other question?
Anything that you need from us to, you know, just...
I think that our systems now are kind of in place, and everybody knows what they need to do. But if it gets, if it starts to take off and get crazy, you know, we may need more help. So.
Thank you. Mrs. Stein.
Alicia, can we, I know we get a lot of emails this time of year, but I did find in one of your emails, parents of vaccinated children should be sending their vaccination cards in preemptively to avoid quarantine. So could you just make that announcement? Because I know a lot of parents don't know about it. And perhaps CDSP or people could blast it because it will save you a lot of work if you have registered everyone who's vaccinated.
So just like we collect medical forms, if people would send us their vaccination, a copy of the vaccination card, we have a system to track that. And then when we do our quarantine, our targeted contact tracing and decide who needs to be quarantined, we can look that information up a lot easier and just avoid a lot of heartache around, what do you mean, but my daughter, my son is vaccinated? How come your contact to me, if we don't know that, it's, you know, it's, it just causes a lot of confusion. So anyone who has vaccination cards for their students, if you send it to the high school, please don't send it to me. Send it to the high school nurses, and that's on that communication that went out. So Molly LaFevre is the nurse who's collecting that information at the high school. And then at the middle school, it's Diane Ryan. So if I get it, I forward it, but it's just cleaner that way because it goes right to them, and they're tracking it. So that is, thank you for that point. That's really important.
Good. Thank you. Mr. Seeny.
Other than the high school flexibility that they have in the first lunch period, are there any, sorry, are there any other changes to schedules that any of the?
No, the seniors, you know, the seniors during the lunch period, if they have the period off, they can even come back. So there was no other changes to schedules now?
Not at elementary school or middle school times or anything?
No, we're starting at the regular time and then the regular time.
Thank you.
Other than the middle school, it's like, what I've said before is rotating the schedule.
Okay.
Mrs. Parent. I just want to clarify, regular time means regular time from two years ago, not regular time from last year.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I forgot my other question.
Can I just clarify the communication? Because I want to be clear with the board too, and the plan and what Alicia has said, that at the end of the week, we are going to post, well, actually, that will be on a daily basis by school. But the individual emails to parents every day that there's a case, we're going to do that on a weekly basis, and we'll see how that goes. If there's such a change that demands a more regular update of it, because I think it's hard just to keep up with it. The email, I don't mean from ourselves, but the emails, the dashboard will be updated by each school. So we hopefully, that will be more helpful to actually the parents. But if we have to go back, we'll go back, but we'll see how that goes.
Mrs. Parent. I remembered. Alicia, when you, if there's a child that's contact trace that is vaccinated, will their parents still be notified that they were exposed?
Oh, I get what you're saying. I'm sorry. I just think about that. So probably not. Probably not. Oh, well, actually, we probably need... Oh, well, actually, we probably need to because if they have symptoms. So that's where it gets a little sticky with the vaccination is if, if you're a close contact and you are vaccinated, you need to know, you need to do that symptom assessment and see if there's any symptoms. Because if there's symptoms, they need, that person needs to stay home and get tested, just like they would if they were a contact that was unvaccinated. So, but if you're vaccinated and you don't have symptoms, the recommendation is, and we're not requiring it, but the recommendation is to get tested day three to five post exposure anyway. But that'll be up to each individual family and then watch for symptoms really for that full 10 to 14 days post exposure. Because it can take that long to have symptoms. So we'll adjust some of our communications to reflect those instructions. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Ritchie.
Could we just touch on the process for the buses this coming school year? Is it going to be similar to last school year? Are we modifying in terms of if there's a COVID case positive on the buses?
So technically, I'll just be really transparent with this. Technically, it's a six feet distance on a bus. We did not do that last year, right? And we're not doing it again this year. It has been really difficult to isolate one or two students. And honestly, keep track of that. We weren't able to keep track of that. And if we were doing six feet, we'd be doing a lot more buses too from last year. And on occasion, we have actually done the whole bus, quarantined the whole bus.
We've done kind of a wide range of things. I think really what, what it comes down to is we get the bus manifest and the times. The Kate Barbieri will give me the actual bus route for the day. So it tracks each stop. And then what I do is try and I figure out where the student stop is. And then I figure out how long were they on the bus in the morning and how long were you on the bus in the afternoon? And if it's under 15 minutes, then we're done. If it creeps up to 15 to 20 minutes, then we start looking to see who was on the bus before and who was on, you know? So to try and determine who might be quarantinable. And then sometimes we watch the video and try and see where the student is, which it takes, it's really, really time. That part is really time consuming. So for older students, it's a lot easier because you can ask them, who do you sit near? And, you know, I know that's not 100% reliable, but it seemed to work last year. I don't think we had cases of people, it was like, oh, well, was it? That student was exposed on the bus. So we do the best we can on the bus, but it's, it's not perfect, just like on the playground. It's not perfect trying to figure out who ran by who and how long they were with each other, you know? So we really try to target it to areas where kids really spend a lot of time sitting next to one another. And, and the bus, is there a lot of movement and things like that? So the bus is hard, you know, challenging.
Thank you, Mrs. Ritchie. Mr. Brown.
Alicia, quick question. So there's different procedures if you're vaccinated. There's different procedures if you're on sports teams and dates. Has anyone put this in like a flow chart or decision tree so parents could follow at home?
So I've been working on the decision tree around just quarantining in general, but I will add the sports to that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to give you extra work.
No, I know, but you know, everybody needs to be able to see it in black and white. And, and, you know, because the sports are different than the school, it just, it gets very muddy and confusing. So, yeah, yeah, we will put something together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick question on the, the students that are vaccinated and they're exposed and they have to go get tested. Is there any ability for us to use the testing that we set up from the state for those students? Or are they just on their own with their own?
That they're on their own. You know, we haven't done it, but through the health department, I think, you know, through their testing site that they've had. And I think with the variant kind of kicking things up a little bit, maybe we'll see some of these more drive through testing sites. Somebody said that out around here, they've been shut down. I know, I live at Fairfield and the one, there's one up there that people just drive through all the time. So I don't, I don't know if they're planning on bringing that back down here. It's just the ones that people knew about are gone and there's still some around, like at Nora Community or in Stanford. So we'll be sure to have that information available so people know where they can go.
Okay, good, thank you.
I'm sorry, just one open ended, Adam, stretch you on the buses, the play dates. We'll be making a decision on play dates tomorrow because we didn't have, kids couldn't jump on and off buses last year and probably won't be this year, I would think, but we'll make that decision tomorrow.
Thank you. Mrs. McCann.
The point has been made about communicating with parents about the vaccine card. I would suggest that it maybe go multiple places. I think it's one of those points that bears repeating and different parents tend to read different sources. So if it comes out from the principal and from Alan and from you, Alicia, that, that's the kind of information. I think it's okay to have a lot of different places. And I think that because we don't really want traffic in the buildings, maybe there's some thought around how you want to receive the vaccine cards.
You send them by email.
Just, you just send them by email, you just scan it in.
Picture of it, send it by email.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay, no, no.
I read the principal one. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mrs. Parent.
Just a quick question, this is maybe for Rich. Do we have any idea how many more children will be riding the bus this year than compared to last year?
We're much closer to the pre pandemic.
That's going to add more work to your.
Any other board questions or comments around opening? Anything else that?
No, the, the remote learning just remains the same, that there are exceptions for accommodations where they're required or where they're, they're exceptional accommodation. So I'm sure we will receive, perhaps we'll receive some, we'll see what happens. But there are a couple of, there are a couple of exemptions there. One might be the compromised health of a parent or otherwise, and then just other exceptional circumstances. They will be made on an individual basis, considered on an individual basis with our medical advisors.
Good, thank you. We'll move along to the update on enrollment for the 2021, 2020, 2022 year. Mr. Rudolph.
So overall enrollment is pretty steady from the last meeting, up only one student. We are recommending maintaining the 109 total elementary sections as approved previously. As we reported in the past, Ox Ridge is definitely the primary driver of increased elementary enrollment, up 44 students compared to projection. Superintendent didn't mention at the previous meeting a need for a point two F T in elementary P E and a point two F T E for the D E A present release time due to the D E A contract. So it is recommended that the two point two F T Es come from budget control if approved.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. Any additional insight into the, the spike in Ox Ridge, other than we're building a new school and it's the place to buy a house?
We've seen more, a lot more movements in that area. So it's driven by real estate and probably the building.
Yep, good, thank you. Mrs. McCann.
Have we had any increases in enrollment since this report was published? Because I'm wondering if we still have kids drizzling into the school.
No change at least as of when we ran it yesterday. So it's been pretty, pretty flat. We did see a spike of about nine kindergartners compared to the last report, but we did see a drop off at the middle school and high school, which kind of upset.
Thank you.
Any other board comments, questions? Okay. So we will move to, may I have a motion to approve the use of budget control for funds to cover the point two F T E for elementary physical education and a point two F T E for the D E A president?
The whole, the motion.
Yep. Yep, so Mr. Seeny, second, Mr. Maroni, any discussion?
So each point two would be about $14,000, $14,049 for each point two.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on, presentation and discussion and possible action on proposed revised facility use fee schedule. Mr. Rudolph, Mr. Lynch.
So given last year, the Board of Ed did approve a building rental fee increase of three and a half percent. Though due to COVID, we did not rent our buildings, they were restricted. We are recommending no increase to the building rental fee this year. However, we are recommending a four percent increase in the use of fields. We did rent out our fields last year and then this does keep us in line with our peers. So as we have in the past, we did compare to some other districts. And then we have the tables for the nonprofit and profit rates.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. We'll open it up for any board questions or comments. Mr. Seeny.
So when I looked at the table, there's a per person charge for turf fields plus an hourly fee. But if I look at the grass fields, or is there still a per person participation fee plus the rental fee?
There is, yeah.
Okay, so the overriding, when we look at outdoor use, there's two methods.
There's two layers, essentially.
Two layers, okay. But indoor, it's only a single layer.
Plus the custodial fee.
And so the thought process is the per person fee would cover maintenance and custodial?
Yep, I mean, maintaining the fields, you know, any like striping that might have to go on or field paint.
Okay, plus the rental fee. And then the, the second question, maybe your suggestion, it's for next year. If we can, I know our schedule has been pushed back because of COVID and other things, but we could have this discussion maybe as part of the budget process, just, you know, because this does feed into, you know, I guess the revenues of, of the district. And also I think, you know, when you, you think of it on a fiscal year basis also, you can fit it with the outdoor, I'm, I'm sorry, the youth groups and all the groups would be giving the heads up before their seats.
Good point, thank you, Mr. Seeny. Mr. Brown.
Rich, real quick, on that two part tariff structure, is that what our peers do as well?
I'm sorry.
The between the per field and per use per individual as well?
Yes.
Two part prices, that's.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Seeny, when you, when you say part of the budget process and sort of potentially setting this rate, Seeny, and what exactly do you mean?
Well, I guess maybe next year do it earlier in, in the, or before the fiscal year because it seems like we're setting the rate as the fiscal year has gone through.
So I make it year over year.
We're setting for the next fiscal year.
But year over year, if we see it through the budget process, we could see what the increase would be based on the usage of the previous year. It just, I don't know, to me it makes sense from a financial standpoint.
Yeah, and again, I mean, we're not talking big dollars, but it just matches into.
Does that make sense?
Unless you, did you budget the revenue increase?
We assumed a small increase.
Okay.
But we largely left like building rentals, we left flat.
Right.
Because there's a little bit unknown of whether or not we're going to rent and whether or not a lot of groups are going to want to rent.
Sure.
We certainly could do it as part of.
Okay.
If you think in a normal year, kind of to align it with what we discussed in terms of revenue and fees. Good. Any other board questions or comments? May I have a motion to approve the facilities use schedule as detailed in the memorandum dated August 17, 2021? Mrs. Stein, second by Mr. Brown, any discussion? All those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Mr. Lynch, update on summer facilities projects? I think we need to find it.
Those keys are valuable there.
Definitely not to my house. So you have in front of you the report on where we are, this is an annual. Nothing's really changed except as far as the, the new security system. I got an email about six o'clock tonight saying that most of the hardware had arrived. And now they hope to start installing by the end of the week.
Thank you, I think everyone has this, that they read it in front of them, so good. Thank you, Mr. Lynch, for the detail on this. Mrs. Stein.
Mike, can you talk about the carpet in the high school? I was surprised to see that we couldn't afford to replace it. Was, can you just give more detail on that?
Sure, we had. We had gotten an estimate two years ago. And so I factored in some escalation in costs and put that into capital for last year, which was the second year was deferred one year. So it went up and I thought we had enough money, that was a very conservative number. And with the price of materials skyrocketing and, and labor, because you can't get the technicians, the price was double what I had budgeted and they couldn't guarantee being done for the start of school. It was the same thing in middle sex. I was like, all right, forget it. And this was, you know, a state vendor. This wasn't some, you know, some, some guy, this is the state contract.
So what, given that we have, because I am concerned, we have deferred it, how are we going to make sure this gets done for next year?
What I'm hoping is that with the, the library project, we did a preliminary look ahead of the capital plan that the board got last spring. And there's money in there for upgrading the libraries at the middle school, the high school and community. So it would be there. And, and, and also some of the people have said they would prefer less carpeting and, and some different types of surfacing, you know, vinyl and maybe some, you know, wood or just, you know, stuff to break up the, the actual spaces. So.
Thank you.
It's going to get a fresh look.
I think from a library standpoint, it, it makes sense not to pay double the cost and to kind of revisit the look and feel. And I know we see it and hear it from, we've got a supply chain issue with roofing material at Ox Ridge that they're working through. But, I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense just because where we're at, to pay double, not get guaranteed delivery or installation. So, Mr. Maroni.
Yeah, question on the security. Since the system will not be fully operational until September, when will the teachers and staff be trained on the new system? Or are they being trained and they just can't use it until late September?
No, it, it'll be rolling training, you know, as, as buildings get completed, they'll be trained on it. And then it will go online in that building.
Perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Maroni, go ahead, Ms. Maroni.
Another question, a different matter on the home skylight. So that is due in mid September as well. When will that be installed, mid September? And will any, will we have any interruption to the gymnasium while that's being installed?
We're going to try to time it for a, a day when, you know, it's nice weather and, and the kids can be outside having gym class outside. Because the crane actually going to pick and put the thing up on the roof, he'll spend more time setting up than he will actually lifting it. And, and so, you know, we could be done and have that thing up there in, in about half a day.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Maroni. Any other questions or comments on the summer facilities? I know as I've been driving around, Mr. Lynch's team have been, been working hard to get all the schools ready for the opening. So it's exciting. Mrs. McCann.
Just to comment that I'm glad to have this report, we asked for it and it's, it's a new report. And I think it's a great addition, be able to see what's happening over the summers. Thank you for it.
Great, good. All right, thank you, Mr. Lynch. Moving along, we will have an update on the district's teacher administrator evaluation plans. Miss Sion.
Okay, there are slides, but I don't, not necessarily sure that you need them because this will be quick and easy. The state is once again offering districts' flexibilities with their teacher and administrator evaluation. The state is also promising a complete overhaul of the evaluation system next year. There's an awful lot going on up there, so Chris and I are wondering whether and when that will happen. And I believe that Chris on a statewide meeting hoped that it would happen before the start of school next year, but we'll still cross our fingers. They're allowing us to again focus on social emotional well being of both students and staff. So these teacher goals can be focused on that. The administrator goals also can be focused on the well being of their students, staff and outreach to families. The basic difference this year is that there will be summative ratings. So last year we were exempt, it was a little bit of a holiday. So we'll work with the unions, both teachers and administrators, to help them understand what the summative ratings will be. I'm sorry, Michelle, I'm really messing you up. I'm all out of order with the slides, but there will still be onsite observations, both teachers and administrators will have written in verbal feedback. So we suggest that we adopt this and wait to see if any major changes come down the road for next year.
So legally, the board has to support and cooperation with the professional development committee that we have for teachers.
Board questions or comments around this? So we're looking for a motion, we don't have it set up for a motion to approve.
No, as long as, as long as it's on the record that we, that we discussed it, it's fine.
Okay, all right, thank you, Miss Sion. Moving along, further discussion and possible action on repeal of all Board of Education policies not currently posted on the district website. Mrs. Stein and Miss Sion.
I guess what we're going to ask tonight, if there are no other questions, I haven't received any follow up is, after our discussion on the 27th, we're looking to batch repeal all the policies not housed on our website. So I open it up to board members if they have any other questions or concerns. Otherwise, we'd like to move forward and get going on our policy review.
Thank you, Mrs. Stein. And Miss Sion, I know there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes around this and that'll continue. So thank you very much. Any board questions or comments? Good, may I have a motion to approve the repeal of all Board of Education policies? Good. May I have a motion to approve the repeal of all Board of Education policies not currently posted on the district website? Mrs. Stein, second by Mr. Seeny, any comment? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Action items, personal items, appointments, resignations, Miss Sion.
Summarizes what Dr. Adley updated you all on.
Okay, great. For the fireworks. I have a motion to approve the PAR. Mr. Maroney, second by Ms. Ritchie, all those in favor? Thank you. Moving that along. Appointment of an impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters for the 2021, 2022 school year as they arise. Dr. Adley.
This is just a traditional setting up of the hearing officer that gives the, the board the ability to be impartial during these hearings. For the last two years, we have not used, not had to use the attorney setters services. We came close with transportation, but that was not necessary. But in this case, we're looking to appoint the hearing officer for disciplinary matters and other hearings such as transportation and expulsion, expungements.
Questions or comments from the board? Pretty routine on an annual basis. All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of an impartial hearing officer for student disciplinary matters for the 2021, 2022 school year as they arise? Mr. Seeny, second by Mr. Maroney, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Action item C, discussion and possible action to delegate to its appointed hearing officer responsibility for hearing expulsion, expungement requests and for hearing school accommodation appeals, including transportation appeals as provided by statute. Dr. Adley.
This is just the same scenario.
Okay. Questions, comments? Again, annual kind of routine. May I have a motion to delegate to the appointed hearing officer responsibility for hearing expulsion, expungement requests and for hearing school accommodation appeals, including transportation appeals as provided by statute? Mr. Maroney, second by Ms. Ritchie, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Michelle, we will move back to public comment. Anyone from the floor? All right. Thank you. We will move to Zoom.
If you would like to speak during public comment, please click the participants icon on the bottom of your Zoom screen. Next, click the raised hand option. The facilitator will identify you. Please state your name and address. You will have up to three minutes to comment. There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you for all those folks in the audience joining us again. Thank you for all those folks out there in Zoom land. Again, thank you for continuing to work with us. School is opening on Monday in person. Lot of hard work, a lot of energy. We'll continue to move things forward. It's exciting to start the new year, a little sad to end summer, but exciting to start the new year. And a thank you to Dr. Adley and all the cabinet members for all the work that was done over the summer to get the schools ready, including the hiring and the facilities. It's an incredible amount of work. This team does not go on vacation. I spent some time here over the summer and thank you for all the hard work that's done throughout the entire summer on behalf of our students and our families. So thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Stein, second, Mr. Brown, all those in favor? Thank you. Have a good last few days and look forward to seeing everyone at school.